Couple of minutes over here, but I want to welcome all of you to this Thursday, March 22nd.
See you there.
I'm sorry, this is Wednesday, March 21st. Affordable Housing Workshop, I apologize. Time flies when you're having fun, Mayor. I'm telling you, man. I want to welcome everyone to this Affordable Housing Workshop, March 21st. And I will turn it over to the city manager for introduction of item and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, I'm going to be very brief. You've got a lot of material in front of you today. And Assistant City Manager Lavine is going to walk us through it along with Director Michael Parker. And I'd like to thank Ray Kuniewanski, I think I've got that right, Ray. It's close. I'll say that, it's close. I'd like to thank Ray for being here today. Ray is from Atlanta and with Columbia Residential. Raul will recognize him. And we're going to have another guest. I'll let Raul introduce. So this will not only be a staff presentation, but we've got some other folks that have been engaged in these matters related to affordable housing. We're looking forward to hearing. And with that, I'll turn it over to Raul. Again, I think we've got a lot of information. We've got some actions at the end of the presentation we'd like you to take. And with that, I'll ask Raul to begin.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. And as the manager said, we're doing an Affordable Housing Workshop today, sort of to give you an update on where we are and some of the issues that we've been discussing with the Commission in the past, as well as an update on where the recommendations from the Affordable Housing Workshop, where we are on those. As the manager said, Michael Parker, the Director of Community Housing and Human Services is here. He's going to take part in the presentation. Ray Kuniewanski, he's the Chief Development Officer for Columbia Residential. He'll be talking about the Orange Avenue Apartment Complex Master Plan and Redevelopment Process. We will have Representative Lorraine Osley join us. She's been involved with a Purpose Built Community process that we're also undertaking. So she's going to talk a little bit about that. She said she'd be running a few minutes late, but she will be joining us for the presentation. And then we have...
Introduce yourself. Brenda. Tawana Thompson, Director of Development for Tallahassee Housing Authority.
And we also have the executive team here. And this has been really a holistic approach as we're looking at these issues, specifically in South City and the Bond community. And involves a lot of the work that all of us are doing. So work that Wayne's doing with code enforcement and planning, work that Cynthia's doing with public safety, some of the work that Michael and I are doing, and of course, the utilities that Reese is still over. All this is holistic approach. So this is really a team approach at looking at affordable housing and all the issues that we're confronting as we're trying to address this really critical issue that the Commission has identified as a priority. So today, we wanted to give you a little background on where we are with the recommendations on the, from the Affordable Housing Work Group. As you'll recall, we had a joint city-county workshop on October 26, 2017. Out of that process came 13 recommendations that the Commissions both approved. So we'll be giving you an update on where we are with those. We'll also talk about some of the other things I've been working on, especially the Orange Avenue renovation complex, redevelopment complex, which is a critical piece of affordable housing, especially in the South City area. And then there's also some action items that we want you to look at and the recommendations that we've made and agree or make, approve those for us. One, as it relates to the recommendations on finding a dedicated funding source, we're asking you to direct us to look at the finance policy, and I'll go in this in a little more detail later in the presentation, to maybe carve out some revenues out of our general fund to dedicate for affordable housing. The other one is provide continued support for the concept of community land trust. And we'll be talking about that in a little bit of detail through the presentation. And the last one is, as we look at our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, we're currently working with the Canopy Development, which is the first big development that we have that's triggering the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, and asking that we bring back a final development agreement related to that before the break in July. And of course, seeking any additional guidance and direction from the Commission on this issue. So as far as Affordable Housing Work Group, they made 13 recommendations to the City Commission. And we broke these out into major categories. So the first set of recommendations relates to improvement coordination and collaboration between all the partners that we have, the governments in town, the city and the county. And the big one that's on that list is related to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. So right now, both the city and the county have separate advisory committees. And the recommendation was to try to, those advisory committees to meet as a joint group to look at affordable housing issues. And as you all know, this group exists because they have to approve the three-year plan in order for us to be able to get ship funds from the state. So the first meeting of that group is tomorrow. We've been coordinating, trying to get that group together, and the first meeting will be tomorrow. The second recommendation was related to the creation of an Affordable Housing Leadership Council, sort of modeled after some that are across the state, specifically the Palm Beach one. And staff has been working, both city and county staff have been working and trying to get this group together. They've had an initial meeting back a few weeks ago, and we're hoping that they will be, actually, that meets tomorrow, right?
No, no, sir. We met on February 7th. We're trying to set up a meeting with a representative from Palm Beach County's affordable, their Housing Leadership Council.
Yeah. The third one is coordinating with the Leon County Housing Finance Authority. And the county has made the introductory meetings with us and them, and we've been having discussions with them about potential funding sources, especially the Escambia County Single Family Bond Program, which is available to a 19-county area, and that provides some sort of financing for affordable housing that will allow us to expand our affordable housing ownership programs. And then the last one is prioritizing infrastructure projects that support affordable housing. And this is ongoing. As you all know, the blueprint process identified a number of projects, infrastructure projects in South City, some stormwater projects. There's also some sidewalks, street improvements, that kind of stuff. So as we go through that process and start identifying what projects are going to be done initially, this is going to be an important, a critical issue to prioritize those projects in the front end. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. You know, I don't know whether you want to go through this entire presentation and then have us have a discussion at the end, or whether you want us to stop at specific points where we have the comment.
Whatever the pleasure the Commission is.
Commissioner, did you have a, I mean, my inclination would be to have...
Just related to the infrastructure. And I know that as you go through the presentation, we're going to get to a place where the manager has proposed excess money go to affordable housing. I think that that is, for that money, I'm all about infrastructure projects. But I don't feel that since we just recently, maybe as recently as less than a year ago, went through an entire discussion about data-driven analysis, we've had the city public works people go out and look at every sidewalk and every purchased equipment to do this, and every road in the city, citywide, and began to set up a very organized, clear way of prioritizing those road projects and also that sidewalk work. So I don't want this to be a flavor of the month, what are we going to do on it, how are we going to prioritize infrastructure projects this year? Because there's no way to plan, there's no way to, as you know, that money went down to virtually nothing during the hard years between '08 and 2010, down to just a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. But to just now shift away from a mechanism that we had identified that was very data-driven and was citywide, and begin to prioritize all of the money to just this one criteria is of concern to me. Because you know I've been talking about infrastructure in the city streets and sidewalks for eight years now.
And Commissioner, that's not what we're recommending doing. We have identified in the general fund five to six million dollars to support general government projects. What we're recommending is that the sales tax extension had already identified some capital projects in this area, and trying to prioritize those on the front end to make sure that those improvements are made in that area to supplement some of the work that all the other partners are doing.
Right. And the other thing on this very same note, you know, we're going to get into some conversations about how we can identify properties that can meet this need. And I think those locations need to be coordinated into the selection of where we put this money to. So just wanted to point that out and not let that go by without a comment.
Commissioner, if I may, I think that is the essence of what we're talking about. The better coordination, so we've had a lot of success as it relates to underground work along with road work, sidewalk work. That's essentially what we're saying here, better coordination and anticipation of future projects.
Good.
The next set of recommendations related to housing design for affordable housing, and then just considering the needs of residents that enhance the overall community. Part of this is staff has been working with the Planning Department to identify what are good design standards related to affordable housing. So we will be working with the design studio to identify those. The other one, which is a big issue that we're asking direction on, is the establishment of a community land trust. And we have been talking about this issue, and on April 13th, we are having a workshop with the Florida Housing Coalition that will give some training on what potentials there are to establishing a community land trust in the community. So we've invited all our partners, city and county staff, to be part of that workshop so we can get a better indication on what a community land trust is. Obviously, there is a lot of benefits for community land trusts in communities that have implemented this. There's also some, probably some drawbacks in our case, because usually these are really successful in communities where you have high land values, because you take the value of the house, the value of the property out of the equation for the price of the house. And in our case, in the areas that we're looking at right now, those values aren't as high. So we don't think that the impact is going to be that great. But we will be assessing and evaluating that. The other good tool is, that is a good tool to avoid gentrification of neighborhoods. So we'll be looking at that issue also. But after this workshop, we'll have a better idea and better direction on what we can do and what the opportunities are locally for a community land trust. The next set of recommendations related to promoting the development of permanent supportive housing. And the homeless shelters have requested that the Housing Authority designate some of their Section 8 vouchers to assist homeless persons transitioning into permanent housing. And in discussions with them, they've agreed to look at allocating 81 vouchers for that purpose. Obviously, they have a process they have to follow to be able to do that, but they've indicated the support for that concept, and they're moving in that direction. The other item that was recommended is for us to look at ways to assist renters that were transitioning out of homelessness into housing and issues with their unpaid utility bills. As you know, we have a lot of programs in the city right now that assist individuals with utility bill payments, not only scheduling those or doing payment plans, but we also provide funding for a lot of organizations through our federal funds, through the emergency support, actually, through Echo, that help citizens that are, have issues with their utility bills and their housing needs. So in the last budget, we allocated almost $160,000 to do that. The big one is related to finding a dedicated funding source for affordable housing. And the committee identified a number of potential options, including general revenue bonds, bet tax, local option sales taxes. All of these have specific statutory requirements that we'd have to look at before we can make any recommendations, but we're still looking at them. The one item that we can probably look at is our own finance policy. And as you'll recall, in 2010, when the deficiencies fund had been significantly depleted because of the economic conditions that we were facing, the Commission approved a plan to replenish that deficiencies fund. Part of that plan was any one-time revenues were allocated directly to the deficiencies fund, any year-end surpluses were dedicated directly to the deficiencies fund until the point that that fund was replenished and at policy level. So we're at that point now, and we're recommending it, looking at maybe allocating some of those one-time revenues to go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, or any surpluses that we may have at the end of the fiscal year, allocating those to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
What's the recommended policy level?
It's two months operating expenses, which equates to about $23, $24 million.
And we are where now?
About $23, $24 million. We're like at 99 or even almost 100%. So as part of the budget process, we'll be bringing back that recommendation. But if the Commission decides that that's a good idea and approves that, there is an item tonight on the agenda where we're selling a parcel, we're getting paid back, that there's potential to move those funds into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And that provides some sort of funding mechanism to keep growing that Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so we can start doing some of the things that Michael's going to talk about later. The last item in this section was related to ensuring that we got our full, or that the legislature appropriated fully the Affordable Housing Trust Fund monies through the ship allocation. And we work with our lobbyists, the Florida League of Cities, and all the partners that we have in trying to ensure that that happened. As the budget was approved, there was a reduction in ship funds from $825,000 to $322,000 for this year. So as part of the budget process, and when we bring the action plan back this summer, we'll be making recommendations on how we're going to close that gap to continue providing the services that we provide with those funds. So one of the big items that the Affordable Housing Group recommended was, and actually, this was one of the charges from both of the Commissions, is that the work group identify an affordable rental project which could be used, which could use multiple funding sources, and engage organizations that demonstrated best practices in community engagement and affordable housing development. And the project that was identified by the work group was the Orange Avenue Public Housing Complex and redevelopment of that site. The Tallahassee Housing Authority has hired Columbia Residential, and they've been working on developing a master plan, and they've also been hired to implement that master plan for the redevelopment of the Orange Avenue complex. Concurrent with that process, and I see Representative Osley's joined us at the table, we've been working with Purpose Built Communities on establishment of this community quarterback organization that will work with the redevelopment, the Housing Authority, and the area to sort of regenerate that South City area. And Representative Osley's going to talk about the activities that have happened with Purpose Built. But now, let me turn it over to Ray, that's going to talk about, give you an update on the Orange Avenue complex and the master plan that's being proposed.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much for giving us time to bring you up to speed. I've met with most everyone, although Commissioner Ziffer, we've had a lot of difficulty, your schedule's worse than ours. And unfortunately, we haven't had an opportunity to speak directly with you. But again, thank you for the opportunity to bring you up to date on where we are in our process. So we completed the master planning community engagement process about a month ago, and we're in the process now of finalizing the full report with all of the information and documentation. The slide presentation is just sort of a short view of what we did. So we went through about an eight-month community engagement process, and part of that process involved meeting with 70-plus individuals and groups representing the city commission, the county commission, the mayor's office, the neighborhood, the residents of Orange Avenue Apartments, residents of Appalachia Ridge, Lehigh, Indian Head, all of the different communities that are impacted by any potential redevelopment, to find out what did they want to see. We held a total of eight workshops over four months between August and December. The workshops were two hours long at a minimum. We held one workshop each month on the Orange Avenue site at the Oliver Hill Community Center to afford residents the opportunity to participate as much as possible. About 50% of the folks who participated were residents of Orange Avenue. The other 50% was a mixture of folks from surrounding neighborhoods, of people who had interest. Some commissioners came, folks from FSU, from FAMU, a very wide range of people participated in the process. We use a series of techniques to get information from people. The first page you're looking at is called a word cloud. So in the first meeting, we give everybody a blue card, and we ask them to put one word, two words, five words that describe what they would like their neighborhood to be. All those words are then...
Don't paint it orange, by the way.
Yeah. All of those words are then put into a computer, and this word cloud is generated. And the larger the word, the more frequently it was put on paper, the smaller the word, the less frequently it was put on paper. Then we use this as our entrance sign to the next workshop, so people are reminded of what they told us. The next page is representative of what we call a visual preference survey. We start the first workshop with a wall that's typically 10 to 15 feet long and eight to 12 feet high, covered with photographs, images of apartments, of houses, of green spaces, of parks, of hospitals, of shopping centers, of everything. Everyone is given some green dots and some red dots, about five of each. The assignment is, you've got to look at this wall, and you put your green dots on the things you really want to see in the new neighborhood, and you put the red dots on the things that you do not like at all. So every workshop, we do a visual preference survey, and we narrow the pictures down each time based on the red dots and the green dots. And you can see that it becomes very obvious over time what it is people want to see and what they don't want to see. It helps drive the process. It helps us understand what people see and want in scale, and all types of things as far as future development goes. The next page is about water retention and detention. Florida has its challenges with that. Tallahassee, of course, being in Florida, has its challenges with that. So one of the things that we do with our engineering group is have them provide us with all the flood zone maps. So the lower right-hand corner shows you the flood zone map for this particular area, and of course, dotted, in the dotted line is the site itself. The darkest red is where the flood actually occurs, and as you come up the hill, it becomes lighter and lighter. You can build in the light zones, you can't build in the dark zones. All of those things inform what we come up with as a master plan, and so the next page shows where we are in the master plan itself. What did we hear? We heard people say, well, we saw from the visual preference that they really didn't mind three-story buildings. We had a lot of comments initially, people saying that, you know, oh, we don't want, you know, three-story buildings or higher. But then, when you looked at the visual preference survey, invariably, people pick higher-density things. And I go to a lot of these meetings where people are screaming and yelling about density, and then every picture they pick is the 90 units per acre density that they like. So we heard people say that if there were going to be taller buildings, they should be at Orange Avenue. They shouldn't be as you get deeper into the property, which makes sense. As you get deeper into the property, you're butting up against single-family homes. So in the final master plan, the buildings that are in sort of the pale orange are three-story buildings, the buildings in sort of the pinkish, whatever color that is, are two-story buildings, and the buildings that are in lavender are a one-to-three-story building where the first floor is where the sort of commercial space would be, the leasing centers, the fitness centers, those types of things. We heard resoundingly from everyone that they wanted green spaces. And you can see, we spent a lot of effort arranging buildings to create green spaces for people. They want spaces where people can see where their kids are. They want spaces where seniors can walk. They want spaces where seniors can sit. They want spaces that people can enjoy, that are outdoors. Another big thing that we heard from almost everyone is that Orange Avenue was, when it was redesigned, was designed to move people from downtown out and to pretty much ignore what you passed through. And that's how the people who live there feel. And they want their place to be a place that people would want to stop, a place where people would see it and go, wow, there's something going on there that I might want to be a part of. So one of the big things that we did is, A, if you look at the Orange Avenue section of this, you notice it's all green. So we moved buildings back from Orange Avenue out of the flood plain, which clearly just makes sense. We took that space and used it as an opportunity to create a more inviting place. So it's a place to walk, it's a place to sit. You remove the 10-foot hedge, people can see into the community, they can see something there that's positive. In the larger piece here, there's even an opening, so you could look up into the neighborhood. You know, it's about making the space inviting. And we heard that from people who live on-site, we heard that from people who live outside of the site. It was very interesting, it was very clear what people wanted. And so those surveys and the other techniques that we use ultimately got us to this place. We've sort of divided it up into tracks just to get a sense of volume and all of that, and from that, we'll go into a phasing world. But what you'll see is about 390 units in five tracks, probably will be two to three phases of development over time. That has yet to be determined, because that's based a lot on funding sources, on the tax credit, et cetera. Then the next page is sort of a bird's eye view, what could this really look like, an artist's rendering? Another big thing that we heard from folks is, you can't get to McLean Park from Orange Avenue Apartments, because the only way to get there is to cross Orange Avenue. And you're taking your life in your hands. Now, I personally walked it. It is less than seven minutes from getting into Appalachia Ridge to get to the park, okay? So it's literally your neighbor. But you can't get there because you can't get across Orange Avenue. So big thing people talked about is creating some sort of a way to get across Orange Avenue. So that's what the big orange pieces depicted in this drawing, is creating a plaza at the entrance to the property that is a way to get across Orange Avenue, so people can take advantage of the park, which is an amazing park. There's a lot of activities going on in that park. There are great resources for anybody and everybody who lives around there, and the folks at Orange Avenue Apartments should have much easier access to that park. It's a great way for them to have their kids have a great place to play. The next part of the assignment was to come up with a vision for Orange Avenue itself from South Monroe to Blairstone. So we do this exercise a series of times called Locate Place and Choose. And so what's depicted in the images here is what's going on in that exercise. Tables are arranged with these big maps of the area. Along with the map are a series of sticky notes. On the sticky notes are images of schools, of pharmacies, of health centers, of apartments, of single-family homes, of parks, of gardens, all types of things that you would find in a typical neighborhood, grocery stores and so on. And each table, usually, we had about six tables going at the same time in a workshop, and each table would work together, about eight to 10 people at a table would work together with the sticky notes and the map to tell us where they thought things should be. The next page shows you sort of how that culminates. What do we do with that information? So you get six tables worth of these images, and from that, you can figure out what are the similarities, what are the things that every table picked to go into the same place? So you, again, you narrow for the next workshop, and you get more clear results. And that ultimately turns into the next page, which is the corridor vision. We heard lots of different things from lots of different folks about what should go where, why it should go there, and this is the culmination of that work, and it gives you a sense of what people think and see. So they really see South Monroe and Orange Avenue as the primary retail. I mean, and this is from everybody that participated. They see the stretch of Orange Avenue where Orange Avenue Apartments are as being predominantly residential. You know, we had a lot of discussion up front, there was a couple of people who felt like there should be a grocery store on the Orange Avenue Apartment site. Well, you know, I'm a developer, so, you know, my immediate reaction to that was, it's not a great location for a shopping center, because it's hard to get in and out of, it's not great visibility, it's all those, but, you know, I can't say that in the meeting, let the community figure that out for themselves. Well, the community immediately said, no. We see this as housing. And we see the retail center up at, you know, Monroe, Orange, Adams, in that area, and what we really would like is a nice sidewalk to get there, a nice path to get there. So that's how the vision goes. Then last piece is what happens now. So, you know, our company's business is about implementation. So for us, that's the next step in all of this. So for us, that's the next step in all of this. It is clear that in order to get to a true mixed-income community at Orange Avenue Apartments that we cannot replace all 200 units of public housing on that site. That was clear from day one. So to get to a true mixed-income environment, 30% public housing, 30% tax-credit housing, 30% market-rate housing, or somewhere in between, it's going to take about a total of 600 units of development to be able to accommodate the 200 units of public housing that are there today and replace them. Our site plan is roughly 390 units, so we're a little bit away from that in the overall development. So we know that we'll have to do some off-site development in order to get to the full replacement of the public housing, which is required by HUD, as it should be. So we have been looking at sites. We hope to have a site under control in the next few weeks. We've been in negotiations on a seven-acre site that's in the neighborhood, so we're very excited about that. And then the next step is financing. How do we put that together? So there's been discussions with Florida Housing Finance Corporation, there's been discussions with the county housing finance group that can issue bonds, there's, we've had lots of discussions to talk through Plan A, Plan B, and so on. Clearly, the 9% credit is the most beneficial way to go. The most amount of resources get created in one space through the 9% credit that can ultimately finance a project than any other way to do this. And we've been in discussions about that. There seems to be a path to get there. It will take a lot of will, it will take a lot of cooperation from the Housing Finance Corporation. Those discussions are underway. And as we said to each of the commissioners in our meetings, there were going to be asks, that's going to be one of the asks, that you help us, help them come out with an RFA, that this project would score well under. And those steps are in process. Assuming that we get that process moving forward and we secure a contract on this piece of property, the first development would actually be off-site. And the reason for that is it allows us to build a property and move people from the site to a new property in the neighborhood and cut the relocation costs dramatically in the course of redeveloping the Orange Avenue site itself. And then we can phase the Orange Avenue site from there. So that is underway. Assuming that an RFA is issued in October of 2018 and we would be successful in that application, we would be notified sometime in March, April of 2019. Design development and architectural would start immediately thereafter. We would be looking at a closing sometime in the October-November period of 2019 with the opening of the first project in December of 2020.
Great. Thank you very much, excuse me, Ray, for the presentation. I've had the benefit of seeing you all stand out property in Atlanta that is, I just think, spectacular and pulls together well. What I think Representative Ozzy will also lean into, the whole purpose-built nature of it, the mixed facilities, the fact that the affordable housing that's presented there is nearly indiscernible from the market-rate housing, which is, you know, really important and I think a fine opportunity that we want to achieve here. As it relates to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, for the benefit of my colleagues as well, I did meet with Trey Price, the director of the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, along with his staff, and Michael joined me for that meeting a few weeks ago. And we asked them for, you know, permission, similar to what they did in Duval County, where they allowed the local government to prioritize a project. And it was a special exception that was made in Duval County's case. They were very interested in our proposal and I believe yesterday, you all did a follow-up meeting with them. Actually, this group here did a follow-up meeting with the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. And I just think we're going to have to keep up the pressure there. I think there is a willingness, they do want to work with us, they understand that we're bringing a lot to the table as well and a real commitment to the project. And it's our hope we can make that happen. And finally, I just want to mention, Row, you mentioned in the introduction around the potential for sort of land trust. You know, to me, it seems, and I heard you mention you have already identified, Ray, a seven-acre parcel within the area, which I think is great. Part of the, you know, part of the benefit of a land trust, I would think, especially within this census tract, is that instead of relocating those families into other parts of town where they have not built community, where they have not built connection, where, you know, their trusted babysitter who lives down the block is no longer there, that we've got to really try hard to maintain that sense of community. And although it is a lower-performing income tract when it comes to land values, it still accomplishes our goal of keeping communities together. And so I don't see that as a downside to the trust. I understand the values, the land valuation piece of it, but to me, this might be a real opportune time because what you're going to put on those 30 acres, did I get that right? It's 30, right?
Yeah.
30 acres will have the potential to transform the housing in that area. And as your project brings economic lift to the area, you could imagine that that lift is going to flow, you know, around it. So the values that are on those houses today may not be the values 15 years from now because of the investment you're making. So I just want to re-put a plug in for the land trust piece to this, especially in some of these census tracts that are going to receive this kind of investment, that will ultimately flip, I think. They will flip. And we don't want to price the people there out of the benefit of the investments we're making today. That's it. Commissioner Richardson.
Several issues that I just wanted to go back and ask questions about. The floodplain issue was one. And is, are there things that we can do? I know we've talked about through Blueprint, enclosing the drainage ditch that runs through that property. I don't know if the purpose of that is to address the flooding issues or not, but if there are things that we can do as a city to address the flooding issues in the area. I know we've done some things in the past that have helped. And Ray, you talked about, you know, people wanting to see this as an amenity. You know, right now, it's seen as a housing project.
Right.
And we've got to get away from that image of these housing developments as housing projects or low-income projects. And I'm sure you probably heard that during the discussions, that, you know, that's the impression that people have. And so whatever we can do to address that as well, and based on your renderings, clearly, that will be addressed. But I think about the trip that I was on with the Housing Authority that we did to Tampa, maybe a year or so ago, Tawana. But I was so impressed by what they had done in Tampa because the housing developments down there were totally indistinguishable from the surrounding community. I mean, I had to ask at certain times, now, are we still in the development or are we in the, the architecture was the same, I mean, the infrastructure, there was no distinguishing the infrastructure in terms of roads and sidewalks. And I think that's what we want to achieve in this area.
Well, I would invite any and every one of you to come to Atlanta and see some of our work. Our company's been in business 27 years. I didn't say this earlier and I should have. One of our core beliefs about this type of development is that we are different from your typical merchant builder because we're building a product that we expect to be an owner and manager of for the next 25 years. We are not building it, leasing it, selling it, and saying goodbye, good luck. And I do think that sets our business apart. It is more common for those who do the type of work that we do because once you use the tax credit and you sell to an investor, you're, we're guaranteeing to that investor that they will get their credits because we will, you know, make sure that residents are in compliance with the tax credit legislation and income structure and we will maintain the property. And we're making those guarantees for a very long time, so we stay part of the development. And our arrangement with the Tallahassee Housing Authority is that we would develop, we would be part of the ownership structure, and we would manage long-term. We have a 27-year history of doing that. If you go to, if you can't come to Atlanta and see it in person, go to our website, ColumbiaRes.com. You can see our portfolio there. We're, we manage about 7,000 units in 48 properties in four states. You know, I came to work at Columbia 10 years ago to run the development group and I had known Noel Khalil, who's the founder of our company, for, I've known him for about 30 years. I loaned him money on his first transaction 27 years ago. So we've known each other a very long time. And I chose to come to work there and now run the development company because of his belief that this was something that you did as a long-term investment. You know, we could make more money if that was our only goal in life, but we wouldn't have as much fun at it and we wouldn't see the changes that we see in the places that we work. And there's a lot of value in that. And it's fun to come and work in these communities and work with folks, you know. I've got, you know, three or four elderly women now that, at Orange Avenue that are my buddies, you know. When they came to Atlanta, you know, Noel got upset because they didn't ask him to sit and have lunch with them. You know, they asked me to sit down with them. Because we got to know each other over the eight months that we worked through this. And I promised them at the first meeting that, you know, I'm very frank, so you'll just have to handle that, that, you know, I know I probably look like just another white guy who's standing up in front of this room who's talking a lot of nonsense. But I would promise them that I will say what I'm going to do and I will do what I say. And I expect them, if they don't see what they told us in the meeting in August, if they don't see that reflected in the drawings in September, that they better call me out about it. And if they don't see the new information in September in the drawings that they see in October, they better call me out about it. And the beauty of the process is that we're very cognizant of that is because that's our approach. And at the end, I had several people come up to me in December and tell me that it was the first time they'd been through a process like that where at the end, they could actually point to things that they knew they had said. They were in the drawings. They were part of what the plan is. And that's really important to us because we think that what we're doing is building community, not just building buildings.
Yeah. Thank you. And just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. In terms of the design, and you talked about this to some degree, is the mobility and walkability in particular. Right now, it's very restricted in that area because we don't have the infrastructure in place. We don't have sidewalks. We've got people walking in the middle of the street to get from one place to the other or, you know, places like the grocery store or Clayton Plaza are not accessible safely anyway, you know. And so whatever you all can do, in addition to what we have begun as a city and county, we're looking at, we've already started some improvements along Magnolia Drive, as you may know, and looking at improving the infrastructure on some of the internal thoroughfares in that, in that area. And so whatever we can do to increase the mobility in the area, giving people the opportunity to get around other than, you know, by car, either bicycle or pedestrian. And that also has an impact on their personal health and well-being.
Right.
Because the kids can be more active, adults can walk around and get more exercise. So it has lots of benefits in addition to, obviously, the safety aspect of it. And then lastly, is just a whole rebranding of the area. I know, you know, we still consider it South City, but that has a connotation to it. And so maybe if we can look at rebranding the whole area and get the community involved in a rebranding exercise, something we can refer to it as, it has a more positive connotation and gets away from its historical connotation. When you mentioned, you know, South City, the first thing that comes to mind is the housing project.
Right.
So if we can look at that. And then finally, one of the things that we're going to be considering at tomorrow's CRA meeting is the extension of the CRA boundaries, which will now include, if it's approved, and I'm hoping that it will, will include the South City area. And so that may be an opportunity for some additional funding. You know, not a whole lot initially, but as the mayor said, as these properties increase in value, then we certainly expect more income-
Yes.
-from that tax increment funding. So that might be, in the long term, a funding source as the project moves along and other projects along that corridor.
In that vein, one of the things that we do know, if the Florida Housing Finance Corp does go down the path of the large county area of opportunity method for the medium county world, the expectation of the city-county investment and selection of a project is greater than the typical RFA process. So there would be a need for more than, I forget what the base is, but-
It's 37.5 for now, but-
Yeah. But they're talking, you know, half million to three-quarters of a million-dollar minimum investment in the project that is selected for the process. So any of those types of things, the expansion of the CRA boundary and those types of things will help everyone make informed choices and make direct investments that can be leveraged dramatically to produce something new.
Okay. And then also, Mr. Mayor, does your design also, if, I guess you all have maybe talked with our Blueprint staff to look at some of the projects that are being proposed, the Superstop at-
Yes.
-Orange and-
And the vision includes that. There were three, I believe, top priorities that impacted the Orange Avenue corridor and the Blueprint process, which we learned about early on. And that's all reflected in what's in our, in the vision plan and is a critical piece to the long-term puzzle.
Right. And now if we do decide to do the public safety complex-
Yes.
-in the area, again, it's-
People were very open to that. The initial response we had in some of the individual interviews was sort of questionable. As we got into the broader meetings and that issue kept coming up, more and more people were very supportive of that, particularly the new order of public safety complex that the mayor has been talking about and others, in making it as much a community center as a public safety center, to incorporate the broader community into the complex and create something that is a more open environment for people to be in. I was really pleasantly surprised at how much positive reaction that got in the course of these interviews.
That's great. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Miller.
Well, thank you. I had concerns about the floodplain. I think everybody's heard me express those before. And so I appreciate it that you have taken that into consideration. And first of all, I want to say that I hope that your 700-acre project is somewhere out of the floodplain.
I'm sorry, what?
Your 700, it isn't seven acre, not 700.
700.
Going to say, we're 700 acres. You're going to really get us excited.
I misspoke. Your seven-acre property, so I hope you're looking at that. I think that one of our next steps needs to be that we need to really dial down on that Blueprint project that has the highest priority, you know, that ranked highly and find out exactly what it can do for us. And I think that it is supposed to get a lot of this, capture a lot of this water and put it underground and put a greenway on top of it. And that greenway is supposed to provide a lot more connection to, to the business centers. And so, but I'm speaking off the cuff, just from what I remember from whenever we looked at that last. And so I'd like for us to take another look at that. You said we're having another workshop on land trusts. If we could kind of add in, fill in some of this information then. And I know that we're looking, you know, we're doing the Magnolia sidewalk, we're doing the Putnam sidewalk and the Polk sidewalks. And I'm wondering if those investments count toward, I'm not saying that we are making up, because I think with the suggestion the staff has made to look for money from the property sales, that it's going to get us some cash, that that's going to be needed. But that also, I think when we make this application, that if we could get credit for these other investments that are, you know, really planned, that would be really helpful and it would show a much greater investment, too. And my final question is really not for you, it's for our staff. But I'm always, and I know it's a county pond, but I'm always mystified that the water seems to be in the Orange Avenue Apartments and not in the pond that's over on the corner of Orange Avenue. And so if someone can come up with an answer as to how we could actually help the flooding with, by making that water go where it's supposed to go instead of where it's not supposed to go, that would be great.
I'll answer a little bit of that with regard to the plan itself. Part of our team is more Bass. And before we even put pencil on paper, we had them do an analysis of the site. And before we even put pencil on paper, we had them do an analysis of the site and let us understand what are the water retention and detention issues that we have to address? How does that impact where we can build and where we cannot build? A full understanding of the flood zone, hence the map that you see here, and all of those things. And so, this site plan and design is based on that information. As far as the seven-acre site goes, we've done exactly the same thing. It happens to release into three basins. So, of the seven acres, only three acres is buildable because of the slope and other issues with the site. But we think we could actually put together a really incredible living space there with a proper retention-detention and ultimately then some additional walking trails and things like that, so...
Great. Well, I am interested in how, I mean, the potential here is just tremendous. And even though we have flood zones involved, we've recognized that in the past and these projects are already, you know, out there to deal with a lot of it. But even so, what you have left is green space, is, you know, there's all kinds of really high-quality uses that you can make of that property. So, I'm not concerned about that. My final question has to do with the piece of property that's between, and let me be more specific, on the, you know, the majority of the project is on the west side of Country Club and Orange. And then there are two sort of wings, north and south, that are on the east side. What is that in the middle? I mean, on the map, it looks like it's...
So, one portion of it is a single-family street, that's single-family homes privately-owned. Another portion of it is a piece of vacant land. And I believe the housing authority is in discussion with that land under nail.
Okay, good. That's the kind of thing, that's kind of where I was going. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? No. Commissioner Ziffer?
Representative Ozzy, you speaking at all or... Okay. I'll wait for my comment after. Lauren, speak.
So, Commissioner, Representative Ozzy is going to talk about the Purpose Built is the other half of this partnership as far as Orange Avenue. And so, that's been going on in conjunction with the development. So, and Representative Ozzy has been gracious enough to work with us and another community leaders on trying to set the stage for that community quarterback. So, I'll turn it over to her.
So, first of all, hi, everybody.
Hey.
And I just want to commend you all for the work that's been done on this, up to this point. I sort of stumbled upon it, kind of, just, you know, through Whole Child Leon and the work that historically Courtney and our steering committee have been doing in South City. And she connected me with this guy, Ray. He's been down there a lot, you know. And then, you know, and I actually happened upon one of those planning meetings because I was down at Oliver Hill for something else and he thought I was coming for the meeting. But anyway, it's really exciting. And so, through that, I have been introduced to Purpose Built communities. And I know you guys all have had, have an understanding of who they are, you know, a nonprofit that's based in Atlanta. Columbia does. How many developments have you done with them?
We're in six Purpose Built communities.
Six communities together. So, they're a really good team together. And as you know, Purpose Built, we can't say, "Purpose Built, we want you to come to our community." They say, "We want," they choose us. And I'm encouraged by the activity that they have, the attention that they have shown us. And I know you guys have been in conversation for a while. I went on a trip to Atlanta, to Eastlake, in December. And we took a group of community leaders, many of us around the table, many of your staff and county staff, Kim Williams, Darryl Parks, Rick Carney, Tori Osborne, and Steve Evans wasn't able to make the trip. But that's sort of the loosely growing group of community leaders that are forming a steering committee to try to put the pieces in place that would secure the deal for Purpose Built to choose us as part of their network. As you all know, I mean, it's very much in line with sort of my holistic, whole-child approach. And that's the approach to the neighborhood, which is, you know, transformational and holistic. And it's sort of three pillars, a defined neighborhood, which obviously we have, and then the three pillars of the mixed-income housing, which you've heard already, and then two other pieces, a cradle-to-college education pipeline and community wellness. So, we're right now in the process of, since the housing piece is sort of secure, really putting together some meat on the bones, if you will, on the education piece. And, you know, we, I think Purpose Built, even though we are not a part of their network yet, they are, you know, they've asked us to do a few things. One was, let's look at some of the education facilities that are currently in the neighborhood. So, a couple months ago, two of their members of their team, we took them to the Wesson facility, we took them to the, we worked with the superintendent to, just to do a real quick driving tour of all of the potential education facilities that are serving the neighborhood. And then, we've had a follow-up meeting with our steering committee. And so, the next step was, let's have another sit-down with the superintendent and let's see how open he is to really digging in on this. And so, we had David Edwards, the CEO, was here this week. We had a meeting with Rocky yesterday. And Rocky is, and Roseanne Wood as well, very open to the next level of conversation. It is doing, it is looking at things differently. And that is, as David, who's done this, and I'm sure Ray could tell you in other communities, it's hard to look at things differently. But the only thing that anybody's agreeing to at this point is, let us come in and let us look at what you've got, look at the assets and look at the, you know, and how can we use existing resources or figure out how to add on top of it to create a true cradle-to-college pipeline? Because that is the key, that if you can, if we can ensure that the kids in this neighborhood and the, or in the defined area have an early learning opportunity that feeds into a, you know, they use the word A-plus, but that has bad connotations for us here, but a top-notch elementary school that feeds into middle school, that feeds into a high school, that is the way to truly turn a neighborhood around. And as you know, we've, many of us have been around this table, been talking about the early learning component of that. And we'd already been in a discussion with Rocky about potentially transforming Wesson. So, that piece sort of continues. And I'm excited about the possibility of having some extra brains from Purpose Built helping us figure out how these parallel tracks turn into one and really complement the work that you all have already started. And the wellness piece, I mean, I think that's, we've got people that were sort of putting little loose committees together. I'm, you know, I'm kind of following Purpose Built's lead to make sure that we're going in the order that they want to go. And in the education piece is the key piece for them at the moment. So, I'm encouraged by the conversations we're having and looking forward to continuing to move forward on it.
Great. Well, I just want to quickly say, first of all, Representative, thank you for your advocacy for us this legislative session. But on this issue, particularly of early childhood education, I'm an acolyte of yours. This has been nearly two decades of watching your leadership on this issue. And having visited your facilities, early childhood education is already, you know, a piece of what you all have had experience with. I wasn't aware that six communities were already engaged, you're already engaged with Purpose Built communities in six different developments, which I think is very, very encouraging. But just wanted to use my comments to lift up your work, your advocacy, and really hopeful that maybe the steering committee group that you're helping to lead in some way can be incorporated with the work that you are already doing, particularly on the Purpose Built piece.
Mayor? Commissioner Ziffer?
Because Representative Ozzy and I had a conversation yesterday. We put in our budget commencing October 1st, $35,000 to go towards potentially funding the director of a community school, which is still happening at Sable Palm, but they haven't gotten as far as we would have liked them to get. So, clearly, those dollars are still sitting in that account. I had a conversation with Charles McDonald yesterday with Children's Home Society because I didn't want to suggest anything that would interfere with what they're trying to do. And clearly, they're behind on that. So, if I could suggest, because I know Representative Ozzy is trying to put together a feasibility study to see how this early childhood would actually work.
How it pieced out.
And work through Whole Child, working with Leon County Schools and Purpose Built, to see how that would work. So, I'm going to ask the commission if we would take $7,500 from the $35,000 and try to support this Whole Child Leon feasibility study at this juncture.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'd second that. I'd like to hear more of how that would actually go forward, detail on how you'd see, because I know that Children's Home Society is a partner, the school's a partner, the city, you know, per this is, and Commissioner Ziffer is a partner. So, how, and I am anxious to see this move forward. It's just really, really exciting that it's made actually the progress that it has made. These things, as you said, it takes a long time to kind of turn the ocean liner in its direction. And the things that are going on over at Sable Palm are very exciting. So, I would vote for this now, but I would like to see it come to some sort of formal presentation about how you'd find that useful.
Thank you.
And I know you have it in your brain over there, so...
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ziff, Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I would want to support it, Representative Ozzy, but I would want to support it after I'm more, this is my first hearing about it. And I would want to support it after I've had more information, maybe as a workshop or as an agenda item at our regular, I just don't feel comfortable making a commitment of funds before I know what it is I'm funding. And if there's maybe even somebody else out there that might be willing to partner in helping this come to fruition, if you can understand what I'm saying.
Yep.
But to do that right now on the spot, I'm a little reluctant.
So, let me respond to both. And I didn't know that, I mean, I'm not here for that purpose, just to make sure, you know, that Michael asked me to come to this. So, that's not...
That was my suggestion.
Commissioner Ziffer, so, so, let me, let's go to the next slide and let me finish that community quarterback and then I'll answer all this stuff. So, so, the, one of the key pieces of Purpose Built, and I'm sorry I finished without going to this slide, is the establishment of a nonprofit long-term that would be, you know, the quarterback organization, that just like Columbia is here for 20 years, the quarterback, the community quarterback is, you know, resident-driven, but it is there to make sure that the residents are involved, that, and that there's, you know, to identify the sustainable funding. And to, what I have really appreciated from both Purpose Built and from Columbia, and to make sure that as this, as all this work that we do transforms the neighborhood, that the residents are still in the neighborhood. And I think that community quarterback, that's a really important role of the community quarterback organization, which is not, I don't see the steering committee being the community quarterback. I think it's that the steering committee helps us identify who it is, what it is. It's probably a new organization, you know, but we're not at that point yet. That's what Purpose Built helps us get to. So, to address this issue, as I mentioned, there's been an ongoing conversation, first around a community school at Wesson, which was going to be early learning. And that really came out at, Mr. Mayor, of much of the children's summit and the Family First work with Jay Smith and others, that we started heading towards on that path. Then the community school sort of moved to a different area. And I think all of us recognize the need for a pilot early learning project of some sort in the South City area. Wesson already has some early learning piece, got Head Start there, Tim Center is there, it's got some Leon County School classrooms there. So, it already has the beginnings of a, but we would need to enhance the quality. And I think wraparound services from organizations like Children's Homes Society, you would all, I mean, I'm envisioning the early learning centers that I've seen, that at EduCare and in other places that are, that are the types, either in Purpose Built communities or the types that we're striving for, are all, they're wraparound services. So, it would be, you would include, you would keep the Head Start there, you would braid in Early Learning Coalition dollars and all the resources that are already existing in our community, potentially raise some more on top of it so that it would be a high-quality center. But you, and you would have Children's Home Society there for their early steps program. You would have existing providers that would be there. Maybe you would have workforce, you know, you would have job training, you know, for parents. I mean, it could be a service center for the parents of those kids. So, we've been at Whole Child, we have been going down this path of looking at a quality pilot center before Purpose Built was ever, you know, in the mix. And so, we have someone who is in the process of a feasibility study, going through an assessment as to whether our community is ready for an EduCare-type facility. So, we're working with an organization called EduCare, which actually happens to be in some of the provider and some of the Purpose Built and Columbia, Purpose Built communities. And I'm not, you know, it may not end up, it's an expensive concept, it may not be what we end up with, but it's the type of thing we want to end up with. So, that, so Whole Child is already undergoing this feasibility study for early learning piece regardless of all this. I just, I feel like they're parallel paths that will be converged at one point. So, we are, we are in the, and so, Tim Center has committed some resources, Mike Watkins has committed some resources, and Children's Home Society in addition to this. So, this would not be the only, but, yeah, it's maybe a piece of this feasibility study going forward.
Right. Out of respect for my colleague, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to have a, roll this into our conversations going forward. I'm a thousand percent in support of making sure that we get the resources where they belong. And I think Whole Child and the work that they're doing is a worthy recipient of that.
Commissioner Ziffer?
Since we already have money budgeted in this year, perhaps you could give us some type of outline that we could bring at our next commission meeting and be able to move forward quickly?
Sure.
Because I'd rather this not wait very long, because there are folks down there that are in need. And the sooner we can get this study moving forward, the better.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
Okay.
Thank you, Representative.
So, now, we're going to, as we wrap this up, we're going to kind of talk about some specific projects, highlight some things that I think are worth commending. First, I want to point out to bring you, remind you of your, the initiative that we're doing, have started and are ongoing with Habitat. You know, you recall that this time last year, the city commission approved joining Habitat as a sponsor. Now, we've played, we participated with Habitat in the past in providing some funding for them to do land acquisition. But this is the first, hence, the first opportunity that we had actually been a sponsor. A sponsorship requires you put in a minimum of $65,000 per project. And thanks to the folks at the Habitat, and I know Commissioner Ziffer had also brought this to our attention, there seemed to be an opportunity to do something unique with this, and that is to blend our project with Habitat with a state program that's called the Community Contribution Tax Credit Program. And what that does is that the state offers rebates to entities that have state tax liability for contributions that they make to nonprofit entities that do things like affordable housing. What so happens that Tallahassee is a taxpayer to the state because we collect state sales tax and we remit somewhere in the, well over $2 million a year in state sales tax to the state. That makes us eligible for this program. And so, with that in mind, we put in $130,000 last year. We built two homes. City volunteers put in over, I think it was over 900 hours of volunteer hours. We had our minimum to put 200 hours per house was a minimum. So, we had a minimum of 400. We'd more than doubled that. And so, what you see in this is the, some of the city workers working on that, those two houses. And then you see the final homes there. I know many of you there for the dedication. It was very heartwarming that we had with the families. As a kind of a serendipity, we were able to match that up with the Warwick Dunn Foundation. If you're familiar with them, they go out and work with families, help them and get set up in a new home. And so, we just were able to work with them on this. And these two families also received assistance from the Warwick Dunn Foundation, got all their furniture and everything put into their home. So, it was a great experience. And so, based on that, you just recently approved us going forward with funding three additional houses for this current year. Now, you, we authorized $130,000 last year. We received a rebate of $115,000. We didn't get a completely 100% because the land value was detracted, but I still think for getting these two homes for $30,000 was a pretty good leveraging. So, this time, we put in $195,000. $200,000 is the maximum we can, anyone can receive in a year. This work is going to start, it was originally going to start this weekend, but they had some delays because of the rain and getting the foundations done. So, we're going to start on April the 7th. We're going to build three houses. These are in the Griffin Heights neighborhood. And... in the Griffin Heights neighborhood, and we'll hopefully be receiving back, I'm hoping for all of it, but we'll certainly receive back most of this money, and we'll just keep recycling it every year. And I will point out that, in talking with the state, we're the first municipality that's ever done this. There are a lot of non-pro, a lot of for-profit corporate entities that participate, provide funding to Habitat, but to the state's knowledge and Habitat's, we're the first municipality that's ever participated in this program.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you. So one of the things I also want to talk about, inclusionary housing. I think it's worth noting that the city of Tallahassee hasn't had an inclusionary housing ordinance for almost thirty years. We were probably one of the first, or one of the second or third cities in the country to, to actually adopt inclusionary housing ordinance. And for those of you that remember, is this is a process whereby particularly focusing on areas that are underrepresented in affordable housing, you try and use the, the regulatory process to require developers to include within that development affordable housing. So when the, the last time the ordinance was, was modified was in 2008, and the Canopy Development, which is going, taking place up in the Wilani area right now, is the first development that has triggered the requirements under the revised ordinance of 2008.
Just, Mr. Parker, just for clarity, the ordinance applies to units fifty and above, is that right?
Correct.
How many developments prior to this one have come through?
There have been none, since 2008, which was, that was when that fifty or more requirement was added to the ordinance.
Got it. And we've, since that time, had, have not had any, part of that is that there are not real fifty tracts, aside from Southwood, Wilani now, the English property, you don't have tracks of land in the city limits that are being developed at this scale.
City limits, and then, and one of the things that came out of the advisory group's recommendation was, is that to try and encourage this, is for, the county has no inclusionary housing ordinance, and if the city and the county both had inclusionary ordinances, where there are obviously large tracts of land in the unincorporated area that could, that accommodate these kinds of developments, if they had one, then, then that would give us, you know, collective authority, and they are considering that. But to answer your question, no, this is the first time that a large tract has been triggered. Now, in the past, most of the developments that were done prior to 2008, which did trigger it, there was an in-lug contribution criteria, so there was funds being collected, but in this particular case, because it's fifty units or more, and because it's a planned unit development, the developer is required to set aside the property, there can, there is no buyout provision allowed in this. So in this particular development, there are sixty-two units that will be required, ten percent, I'm sorry.
Before you go any further, would you please, for everybody, I mean, I, I think I understand what you mean by inclusionary housing, but would you please define that and compare that definition to affordable housing?
Certainly. Well, our, our inclusionary housing ordinance provides for, we define inclusionary units as being the a hundred percent or less of AMI, that's affordable to a hundred percent. And AMI refers to area meeting income, and then that number is set by HUD each year based on the, the meeting income for our, our larger community. So, and we typically use a, and these are the same measures we use for many of our affordable housing programs. So in this particular case, when the ordinance was, was revised in 2008, they used the family of four at eighty percent of AMI as one of the triggering points, which is what we have been working with here. But we do have the ability under the ordinance to go to a hundred percent. Most of our programs that would complement this, like our down payment assistance and everything, are limited to eighty percent or more. So, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. So sixty-two units are required to be built in this development, ten percent of the development. And I will point out that the ordinance, as it's been established, provides some incentives for the developer, because this obviously is a cost to the developer to set aside this property. They are about, allowed a twenty-five percent density bonus if they are, if they are required under this, and there are over two hundred additional units that the developer is going to be able to build in Canopy, because he is subject to the inclusionary housing ordinance. Where we are right now, as you know, that development is still at, in the, in the very early stages. The first plat has been approved by this body, I think probably about four to six months ago. There were eleven units identified in the plat for, of the sixty-two. We're in negotiations with the developer right now to identify the entire sixty-two required plat lots that'll be in this. Now, and that will be folded into a inclusionary housing agreement that will be brought to this body for approval before it is implemented. Now, I will point out that this, this is exciting, it represents in my mind about, I did roughly about eleven point five million dollars investment in our affordable housing inventory, just based on the average sales price that's been established for, for what is affordable, so that's not insubstantial. There are obligations that will come with that on our part. We're obligated to try and find and make sure that we can identify and qualify buyers to get into the, to be able to get into these units.
Quick question on that, on that piece of it. I imagine, given the amount of time that has passed since we have had one of these developments come in, first in twenty years, that we probably have a, a pretty long waiting list of trained people? What does that look like?
Well, you know, obviously people, we get folks that are eligible for, like, down payment assistance, they go to TLC every day, and so, and they get processed as quickly as they can. So there's not a list of people waiting for these particular homes, but...
Thank you, Representative. Do we have a sense of how many?
At any point in time, I don't have a count for you right now. I have sat down with a group of lenders, and TLC, when we went through this whole process, they seemed very optimistic that we would be able to find qualified buyers, though I will tell you that it's, the price points in these houses, though they're affordable, will be higher than what we have typically done, because many of our houses that are, that are purchased through down payment assistance are being done at lower, at lower cost points. So we, where I was saying that there were going to be obligations on our part, and I, I'm not prepared to give you a specific right now, but in talking with staff, I do anticipate that we may have to do some modifications to some of our programs, we may have to took it, providing some increases in the amount of down payment assistance that we make eligible to people, to be able to make sure that we can meet our obligations when these units get built, that we can actually get buyers into the houses.
Quick follow-up, the, so, for instance, if you're a firefighter, police officer, teacher, my guess is that these are all professions that might be above what is the...
Well, actually, maybe not. A family of four right now, and, and would, there, I think it's fifty-eight thousand dollars is the maximum income that they can make, and still be considered at eighty percent or less of area meeting income. So it is not the very low.
Okay.
So there are, there are a pool of folks out there that could do that.
I just, I mention that because I know we've done, in some of our Southside developments, where we incented, for instance, law enforcement officers to, to locate in some of those areas. I think it's a good thing that we're at this, it's a good problem to have, to try to find sixty-two families to be able to occupy these homes, and I really hope that we don't find ourselves slipping away from this goal simply because we don't have enough people in the queue right now, able to take, you know, to take up residence once these things are built, because I think we have a requirement that this inventory remain available for a period of years, right?
Once, yeah, once the units are sold, they have to remain affordable for ten years.
All right, and then, once a developer bills them, they're at the affordable rate, we then have to make sure we've got clients who can go into them, what is their obligation to keep them available? Is it also ten years?
Right, well, they actually, the ten-year clock doesn't start ticking until the property is sold.
Until it's sold?
Yes.
So you could, they could literally be sitting on property for however long until...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to weigh in on that. We're working on that now? That's not going to happen. So you're, you're putting extra pressure on Michael, and that's a good thing. Michael's feeling the pressure, because the most, and which is good, I say that in the positive, we realize that these homes have to be built, not, not just sold once they're built, they've got to be built, and we're going to find buyers for the homes, and that's going to be Michael's job, and I'm very, very, very confident that will happen.
I, again, I hope so, because I, yeah.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Because we know, we know that the need is there, right?
Yes, sir.
There's no avoidance of that. Now, if the criteria is that they have gone through the appropriate training and are now qualified based off of the training that the CHODOs are, are providing, and we haven't had people go through it, or we've got, we've got to go out and search these folks out, like, that can't be the reason we can't get folk, folks in these, in these homes. And so I'm encouraged by the opportunity moment, and encouraging of your ability to help find them.
And early on...
I would imagine, Michael, that we would be working with the real estate community as well, you know?
That's right, so we met with lenders, and when the idea is to have a whole marketing program set up for this, because that, both sides, I mean, it's to encourage, I mean, the anticipation is, is this is going to be a highly desirable place for people to live, it's going to have a lot of amenities to it, so a lot of that, the attraction we're planning on is, is the area itself and its desirability to, to that. So our, our side is going to be making sure we get the pipeline lined up of the buyers, and I, I hope it wasn't interpreted that I was trying to back, I'm just trying to let the commission know that we're probably going to be coming back to you with saying, look, we're going to have, we're probably going to have some special programs set up specifically for here, because the gap that our typical buyer for homes is probably going to be larger to be able to get into these units, even though they're, they're affordable under the inclusionary housing, than what they're typically dealing with now. And so we may have to close that gap by providing some additional levels of assistance.
Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I ask you to define the inclusionary housing sort of goes to this point, because when this was passed, there was a lot of discussion about workforce housing, which applies to firefighters, police, teachers, and so on, and, and that's why I wanted you to, you know, flesh out the differences between affordable and, and honestly, if we still do have that need, I wasn't in government at that point, I was just ancillary to it, and, but I got, I was involved with Evening Rose in a very small way, and knew that they had come forward with some of this type of housing. And if we do still have that need, then that is a good reason to bump it up to that hundred percent mark, especially if you're in a problem finding people to buy the homes. But this comes with, when qualified means they've been through some conversations about budgeting and finance and so on.
All, I mean, assuming that most of these folks will have to receive down payment assistance, that's a requirement to receive our down payments, is they have to go through, they have to go through a process of homebuyer training.
Well, I do have a big concern with a lot of the folks in our community who are, who have jobs, and they are working, and yet they cannot find homes they can afford. So I guess just it's getting the word out, and I know you know what you're doing about this, and so I'm glad it's in your capable hands, but I do see that this is the beginning of a longer conversation, so thank you.
And then, just out of curiosity, how many of our CHODOs right now are doing homebuyer assistance?
Homebuyer assistance? We really only have one CHODO right now that's, that's active, and that's TLC.
When you say that's active in that area, or active period?
Active period. You have to be certified every year to be a CHODO, and so right now, they're the only certified community housing development organization in our community. There are some out there that have been in the past, they just have, and I'm, they may be interested in the future, but they are not currently certified.
I think this is a special opportunity where, you know, at, at least when I first joined the commission, they, they used to be a pretty active bunch, and different ones had different levels of credibility with different folks and communities around Tallahassee. Would be very interested in understanding what has happened with the, with the others, and if there's an opportunity for re-engagement. Thank you.
All right, so, moving on to the next slide, just talk to you a little bit about our infill housing and neighborhood revitalization. When we came to you back in 2016 with the workshop that we did, we kind of talked to you about, you know, our, our primary goal, the resources we have, is, is focused on homeownership, and that was reinforced by this commission because of many things it does. What you see up there is an example of one of the homes that was acquired with assistance from us by the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium, and then, then refurbished, and then sold to a low-income homebuyer. So since that, since that time, we've provided funding to TLC to acquire ten homes, and they're going in, and they're focusing on Southside Neighborhoods, Appalachia Ridge, they've done a few over in Wilson Green, where they go in and basically buy a vacant property, they rehabilitate it, and they put a homeowner in it. And it's, it's an important part. New construction is important, preserving existing housing stock's important, but going into neighborhoods and buying vacant houses, particularly ones that are distressed, that may be, you know, maybe deterior, bringing the neighborhood down and putting homeowners is a very important component. So that's, that's a major portion of what we do.
Michael, can I ask you, you referenced South City, but the entire, I mean, it doesn't, it's not limited to South City, it's just sort of a opportunity?
It's not, but we have, we have given that as a priority.
Well, I would, I'm interested in the rest of the promise zone, too, so...
Yes, yes, ma'am. Next, I want to just kind of bring you up to speed on the Cassanis Village project. It's their expected completion in May of this year. Just to remind you, that's a eighty-eight unit project on the corner of Macomb Street in Georgia, in the Frenchtown area. It's got eighty affordable units and eight market-rate units. Most of the units are for, they're all the units, the affordable units are people at sixty percent or less of area meeting income. It's, it's going to be a very attractive development. One of the buy, two things that are kind of unique about this, one was is that there was a historic, historic home on the property called Cassanis House, that was important to the community, but could have been, had been the home of the Cassanis family. It was purchased as part of this, and as part of the redevelopment, the developer has restored that property, that's the picture you see now on the corner there, that's the Cassanis House, that is their, their leasing offices now. So they've incorporated it into the design. The other thing is, is there will be an element of public art in this project, they're kind of keeping it under close wraps as to what it will actually be, but it, when they do the unveiling, it will include a, and I can tell you, it's a locally-produced piece of public art which will be built into the development.
Michael, when they built the Cassanis House, I know they had to basically take it apart, brick by brick, and put it back together again, but is this a historic color of the house?
Actually, I, I do not know the answer, I, the property, you know, I want, that's why I say it was...
Of course it is, of course it is, that's the answer.
I say it's a restoration, I didn't say it was historic preservation, because you mentioned, just an interesting by note, the property, when they went to, to take it apart, it had no rafters. They built, it was what they call common frame, so whereas you usually have trusses in a house to support the ceiling, they had just basically, they had what's called common framing, so they had to really rebuild the entire house when they did it, so. And this is just, I wanted to kind of show you some of the, one of the things we've talked about, two things, there's been demolitions that we've been doing as part of neighborhood revitalization, this map kind of depicts them, and the other is, is opportunities, opportunities where there are properties, opportunities.
I like that word.
I do, too.
Yes, well, I could copyright that after this. That we have to, where we have city-controlled properties that we could go in and do, in fact, one of them that's reflected on this, this map, there's, the city has owned a parcel on the corner of Saxon and Okalousa, which is right across from the, the store, the park there, for a number of years, and there was a, a broken-down house next to it, and then there was an overgrown area property next to it, so we have been working to acquire all of those properties around it, and it's, it's a textbook case in the difficulties in doing this. We've acquired, one of them we had to buy out of tax, out of a tax sale, and the next, the last one we're trying to close on right now is to get the final property owner's signature to get clear title to the property. But when we're done, we'll be able to match that up with a, with, city owns a parcel immediately on the north end of that series, where a Stormwater, Stormwater owns it, there's a line that runs through it, but there's more property there than is necessary to support the line. We'll be able to take a small portion of the city property, combine it with the others lots that we have, and produce three to four single-family lots that we'll be able to build over there. We're working with the broad neighborhood community, getting input, and it may be the next Habitat project we do, it may be a community land trust, but those are things we're going out and looking at opportunities to acquire properties. In that case, we had a lot of liens on the property for, from code violations, so we were able to use that as a inducement for negotiations to, to, to get the property.
Michael, you know, I know that this, this isn't the first time it's come up that a piece of property's been bought by Stormwater, and then later on, so a buyer comes along, this happened in our Kalar neighborhood somewhere, too, where the person just insisted on buying the property, and, and it was sold to them, but then all of a sudden they had property rights, and they were saying they were denied property rights because they could not build on the property. So when you're, it's tricky to handle this flooding thing.
Well, first of all, I mean... Well, first of all, man, it's not, this is not in a flood zone. This is because there's a transmission of a stormwater line that goes to the property. It's a linear piece. And we've, I've met with, we've talked with code enforcement, with real estate. We're, we're, the part, we can, we can carve off a small section of it without impinging on the ability of them to get access and service the line. It's not a, it's not a stormwater issue in terms of a flood zone.
Thank you.
Okay. The next thing I just want to mention to you is just a quick table here, just kind of tell you, show you what your, the programs that you approve every year are, how they're performing. Just, this is kind of, these are our ongoing programs. You know that they heavily are focused right, continue to focus on preservation of affordable housing stock. We still believe an important component of, of our housing program is making sure that the people that are living in, in affordable housing right now can continue to live there. So as their houses deteriorate, we provide resources so that they can continue to, to live in those homes. And that's, I think that's a very, not only economical, but it's also a conservative way as far as conserving our resources. So you'll see that a lot of our, our programs for emergency repair, where we go in and we fix roofs so people can stay in their homes, we go in and repair plumbing lines or replace plumbing or hot water heaters, usually relatively modest investments on a property, maybe five or $6,000, modest to us, but not so modest to the person that needs the work done. So that's a big portion of what we do, and we do hundreds of those on a annual basis. Next slide. I also kind of related this, and this is kind of tangential, but, you know, we also work with, there are a number of properties in the community that are providing rental assistance that we do not directly participate in. But we do help them, and there's two examples in the last, one's coming up to you tonight, which is Glen Oaks. But I also want to reference that last year, we worked with a, a property owner that owned three major rental, affordable rental properties in the city. It's represented almost 600 units of affordable housing. They were in the process, they were about to go into default on their bonds with their lenders. They needed to refinance. They were also, had gotten code enforcement violations from the city for failure to maintain their property. And so you may recall, there was an agenda item that came to you a year ago to allow for an amendment to that agreement, which we, which you approved, and that allowed them to refinance. So we do continue, and this is just an example, that part of what we're doing is not just always necessarily building new housing, but also making sure we do what we necessary to hold on to the stock that we have. And then lastly, I'll turn this back over to Raul to talk about the action items that are on, that are part of today's agenda.
I'll move options one through four.
Before you, before you vote, we want to make sure that you ask if there are any public speakers on these matters.
Sure. Are there any speakers on this item?
Mayor, we did not have any speaker forums, but there are speaker forums in the back that if someone wants to speak, they could go ahead and then we'll fill that out later. But I don't see anyone.
I had a question on the, so I know that we have stepped up our code enforcement pieces. I don't, not sure how many properties we've sort of come into ownership of, because I know that title and all that stuff can sometimes be an issue on these longtime dilapidated properties. But as relates to a land trust, and really take that off the table, if we own the land, I'm wondering what are, for, to create a land trust, do the properties have to be contiguous to each other? Or, I mean, is that the best-case scenario rather than creating a bunch around the city? What would, how do y'all see that?
From a standpoint of what I understand about community land trust, that's not a requirement. I will tell you, from a standpoint of being able to manage and develop properties.
Right.
Obviously, the more concentrated, and Ray can certainly confirm this, you know, scattered sites are much more difficult to manage effectively than, than it is to have combined sites.
Got it.
But it's not a requirement.
Since you all stepped up enforcement, do we have a total number of sites we've now come into ownership of or control over?
Well, I want to point out, as you referenced it, the fact that we've stepped up enforcement does not translate into ownership.
Sure.
So for example, we've done a number of demolitions, and I don't have that map, but I think it's been presented to you earlier in another setting about the number of demolitions that have been done. A demolition does not give us ownership. What it does is we put a lien on the property.
Right.
Now, we can exercise, and I'll look to Cassandra, because we worked on some of these cases before, we can exercise that right under certain circumstances to foreclose. But ultimately, where you want to make an assessment is, is are you going to be able to get clear title to the property at the end of the process? Because owning a piece of property without clear title is, is more of a liability than an asset.
Got it.
We have gone through that several times, where we ended up with properties and they had error problems where we couldn't actually get the title clear. So we're always very cautious to run that first now to make sure. But, you know, just the fact that we cleared the property obviously is of great benefit to the community, so.
I agree. Commissioners, there is a motion and a second to accept staff recommendation. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes four to zero. Commissioners, are there any other questions? Commissioner Miller?
Well, I just wanted to bring up something that came across my desk this week, and that is that in Thomasville, they have, they have a revolving loan fund. And the purpose of this fund is to acquire endangered historic buildings to stabilize or rehab and sell to preservation-minded owners, protecting them from demolition and neglect. For, for years, I've been talking about, well, it seems like years to me at CRA, that we need some sort of housing residential facade grant or demolition, or not demolition, but renovation program. And we'll talk about that a little bit tomorrow too, but, and I know that Roxanne's been listening to that conversation. But I brought this to her attention too yesterday, in the topic of, in the context of the fact that a lot of the homes that we're talking about are older homes, then I think that if we could, and as I said, Roxanne may be looking into this already, but look into this revolving fund in Thomasville, right across the border, and find out what we could do in this area and how they, how they kick it off. But it's a revolving loan fund where you are able at low interest, you know, to lend money to people that, to do some things that they couldn't ordinarily do, and then they can pay those back, and then that money can be lent out again. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other items before we adjourn? Saying none, we're in adjournment. Thank you very much for y'all's work on this. Thank you, Ray.
Very good presentation. Very good. Thank you. [inaudible][1755.11]